Mr. Brown is a little ill today, so he gets the pleasure of putting up with me. Ted is having a procedure, so he won't be present or turning. So this meeting should be short and sweet. If I get you all to stand up, please lead with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bear with us, we'll get our minutes and our claims done. We get a chance to review this. So I've got a motion to approve all minutes. September 19th, regular meeting, the executive minutes. September 26th, regular minutes. October 3rd, DOT public hearing minutes, October 3rd. And I will second the motion, all in favor? All right, motion passes. Next on the agenda will be the claims. You want to do like an analogy? I have a motion for all claimants presented. I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye. If she passes. All right, 9-0-5. Highway engineer. Looks like we've got the word description quote. Was it one or two?
We had two quotes, four. Two said they weren't free quote. I'd like to recommend that we award the fifth lowest investor of RoadSafe for $30,874.80.
Thirty thousand?
Eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and eight cents.
Do you have any recommendations?
I would move that we award a time back for striking to RoadSafe for $30,874.80.
So the motion's remain to hire RoadSafe. I'll second that motion, all in favor? Aye, motion passes. Then we got job descriptions.
I have two job descriptions I'd like to forward to our firm that helps us with writing the job descriptions.
And you had those presented to HR yet?
No, that's not funny. What do you have to do that? I've got copies here for you.
I would go ahead and give them to HR. Did they come through Kent? Or?
No.
No, so.
That's what he's trying to do. He's going to give them to me, then I'll give them to Kent. They don't really need them until Kent gets them.
Okay. Well, yes.
But that's okay. They don't change anything, I'm ready. Is that okay?
Yep. Yep.
That's all I have.
We have information about the cover bridges.
Uh. Marksmen, I think he sent it to you. Cover Bridge Association is what it was called?
No, I forgot that this morning.
No, I'll see if I can bring it up. So the Indiana Cover Bridge Society is willing to donate a fire retardant spray for our cover bridges. We just have to apply.
Okay.
Do you have the means to be able to do that if we accept this offer?
We would do that, yes.
I think there's training, they ask for training.
Yeah, they do the training.
Okay.
I will, I'll try to forward this to you.
Okay. Yeah, please.
Then.
They need measurements on the length and the walls.
Yeah, we got that.
We felt a lot of attention.
I will just, I'm just by my ear. I'm going forward to Mark to tell him.
Okay. That would work.
All right.
Yep.
Does anybody got anything that Kent weighs here? Wow, that was good.
Yep.
Got off scot-free today. All right. Prosecutor's deputy, chain evidence.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Did I say that right?
Right enough. So I'm here on two items. The first of which is asking the commissioners to reestablish the Kell County Courthouse Security Committee. It was previously established, I believe. However, it has been more or less defund since maybe early 2021.
I think the last one you've done here.
Well, I believe EMA Director Fincher has led two or three meetings since his time here. I don't think it's very clear who the members of that committee were. The Courthouse Security Committee is required by the Indiana Administrative Rule 19, which says we have to have certain things in place. And the Indiana Judicial Conference designates what those things are, the first of which is being a Courthouse Security Committee. There are some recommendations within the Judicial Conference of Indiana Rules as to who should be on that. I'm asking that the commissioners reestablish it with the following individuals on there. The sheriff, one of the judges either from Superior Court, the president of the commissioners, or the presidents designate me, the president of the county council, or the presidents designate me, prosecutor, or the prosecutor designate me, the county clerk, or the clerks designate me, the chief of police in the city of Delphi, or their designate me. And the reason why it would be the chief of police in the city of Delphi is it recommends having the fire chief, police chief of the city of which the county seat resides in, I guess. I would ask the fire chief of Delphi Township Fire Territory, their designate me, EMS director, since they serve this courthouse, as well as the EMA director, since Mr. Fincher. He was the only one on here that wasn't a recommended one under the Judicial Conference. However, Mr. Fincher does have likely the most experience in terms of putting together these courthouse security plans and would likely, I had to imagine, would end up being the president of this after we were to meet and reestablish a change.
How many do I have? You have a number? I missed a couple, I'm sure, then.
What, ten?
Ten.
It's on the second page of his presentation, right?
Yes.
Would this be one of those meeting committees that you paid to meet?
I don't believe this would be a secret ball of this.
Would be involved in that. I think it's a good idea.
Well, I think it's a good idea too.
Yeah, I think that's. I think that would be good.
That's right. It's on the last one too.
Yeah, I know it was.
Sorry, I missed that part.
I said, I think that's who was on the last security committee.
Okay, here's my understanding that it may have been the president commissioners, Mr. Fincher, as well as one other individual.
Sheriff was on.
It wasn't a whole meeting, I don't think. We only met a couple times.
All right.
The one that was really established, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Understood. I don't know when that was officially established.
We got a question.
I wouldn't mind serving on that committee of treasurer because of all the, because of the not even the usual candle and the back of the book today.
I'm sure they got you pegged as a high priority.
Like, like input as far as when our high volume time is. Good offer.
The recommendations as to who should be on there does include other elected officials that serve within courthouses. It may be appropriate to have not only the treasurer but the clerk as to election security and any other, the auditor. I guess she's a high volume person.
You want to get to the form, you want to have the form.
Correct.
Plus you put in your by holes of what your form would be.
Well, I think by moving that direction, it's hard to connect together, but it all would be completely decided. Those members would have to be private.
Believe they wouldn't need an executive session. I think that's one of the.
But some people could be invited in to give office holders or so to get possibly surveys taken and pulled out.
I think the first meeting will be for them just to get set up. It doesn't really do.
Correct, we'd like to do an organizational meeting. We could, I guess, increase the membership. Starting out, I'm just asking for these 10 positions to be on.
I think that'd be a good idea to start out with the first people and then you guys decide to any of us add to your meeting. We like more.
I like motion to.
We're going to start up with the Courthouse Security Committee? Is it committee or organization?
Courthouse Security Committee.
Courthouse Security Committee, all right. I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Since you brought it to me, I can make a motion that I can put you in charge of setting up the first meeting.
I was already planning on doing it, so.
All right, motion second? Aye. All right.
All right, thank you. The other, the second item I'm here for is the county should be expecting to receive some opioid settlement funds here this fall, is what the Attorney General's Office website says. I don't believe we've gotten a receipt of them yet. State of Indiana is expected to receive approximately $507 million. Some of that will go to the state of Indiana. The rest will go to counties and local municipalities. I put in, we're expected to receive the county somewhere around $87,000-88,000 this year, then somewhere between $16,000 and $28,000 every year after that until 2038. There's a ton of information available on the Attorney General's website, and I don't want to bog you down with too much information. Some counties have already put plans into place. I know we had a speaker come from Howard County at the Mental Health Summit. They do have a plan in place as to how they're going to extend their funds. What I'm asking for here today is to have the Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council make recommendations to the commissioners as to how this is going to happen. We believe we are aptly suited to be able to do that as we encompass members across the criminal justice system as well as the mental health system. And we believe that we could put together a list of items that we see would be priorities for the county in terms of addressing the opioid crisis and getting those mitigation efforts in place. And so all we want to do is come to you by January 31st of 2023 and say, here are our recommendations. Here's what we believe the cost would be moving forward, and here's why we think there's a good recommendation.
Who's going to be on that?
The Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council is already established. It contains two public defenders right now. That's Candy Martin, Patrick Manahan, myself, the director of Valley Oaks, Dr. Batu, the sheriff, Callie Schimmel with Community Corrections, Justin Shagley with Pre-Chile Services, and then EMA Director Mike Fincher.
And he said, represent.
I don't know who the commissioners designate me. I'm not sure who it is. The general, or if it's President Brown, I think it's one of you two.
I'm just saying, I want to get back to money. Recallled Doom, maybe it is Doom. So it's already in place, so we don't need to do nothing. We just need our favorable recommendation of how to spend the money.
We just want to make sure that the commissioners would consider any ideas that we put forward. Not saying that you have to follow any recommendations we have, but if we want to put some time into putting together good recommendations, we'd like to think that you would consider it.
Well, since you're the folks that are involved in it more than us.
That's my opinion also.
Yeah, I mean, we've got good people in place in our county, and if you can't trust the good people you've got in place, then why are you here? So I'm in favor of it.
In motion.
Do we need a motion on that? I'll get her ass head, but I don't think we do.
He's just asking you to consider what they present, right?
Yeah.
They just authorize us to put together some recommendations for you.
Yeah.
But we're doing authorization. Yes, you need to mention.
I'll move it, we.
Yeah, we got a motion to allow the, we won't link to a planning, is it planning committee?
So we are the Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council.
Okay.
And we would put together a proposal as to how to use those opioid settlement funds.
And that's your, all right, I will second that motion, all in favor? So you got it on record?
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sheen, I've got a question, please.
Can I?
Mr. Peterson? Yeah, go ahead.
When was this council established?
It was established on April 8th of 2021 by Governor Holcomb when he signed House and ruled Act 1068 into law.
That was just last year.
Yes, ma'am. April 8th of 2021.
And this would be, this would be a group that is subject to the open door law?
I don't know. I'd have to look at the state statute. I don't have that available in front of me.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Will you do that?
I can take a look, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, questions?
Yes, thank you. All right, we're up to. The sheriff. And he is not here yet. The sheriff was going to Almontis, but that's all right. He's sitting there. He looks like he's a busy man. Ready to go. Morning, Greg. Good morning.
Do they have copies of the products now? So today, I'm here to formalize the contract. We agreed upon the dollar amount for revision of the, of the plans to use. And that was a reduced, reduced fee based on a previous project that we had done and reworking those plans to make it the appropriate size for Carroll County. And so you see there, the $459,000 was the additional design fee, redesign fee. And so that's what we had discussed in previous meetings, and I just wanted to formalize that, get that in writing. We're on schedule to get drawings, actually BW Construction has the preliminary set three weeks ago, I'd say. And then we are giving them a final set probably next Monday. We're finished up this Friday.
Is that all the can up and all that involved?
Yeah, that's everything, yeah, yeah. So we'll have the drawings completed at the end of the week, and they'll have, they'll have them to start reviewing and come up with their price.
So we're kind of moving forward kind of quickly. I don't know what we thought we would be.
Well, we had said, I think, back in, trying to remember my dates now, whether it was September, August, that we would be, we'd be finished the 21st of October. So that's, that's our goal this Friday. We're wrapping that up. Now, timing wise and construction, you know, when, when all of that happens, like, that's, that's their deal. I don't know that, so. It's better to get it to them sooner than later, given the environment.
Okay. Does the council have a copy of this invoice? A little on Thursday? Okay. Anything else for?
That's.
You moved all the way up here for that?
Just wanted to be here.
Just wanted to see everyone's smiling face. Well, I appreciate the uptake. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we need to do an action to debate? It's an invoice, we already confirmed with them. Is that the AI document? Do we need two tables since it's Elaine Brown's name? They have him sign it?
Greg, do you want Phil to sign it, or it doesn't matter?
I mean, I would, I would think, I don't think he needs to. I think if you guys can do business for him, that would be all fine. That would be fine with us, but I don't, you guys have to make.
If we can draw these over lines and build and sign it at a later date, is that all right? Because it's got his name actually on it.
Right, right. So that would be fine.
You mean upon that line?
What's with this invoice? This is correct, the 229. Correct.
So we got two different amounts.
Two different amount.
Oh, you said you've got a new one?
We've got a.
The one is from Almontis. This one is, this is just your professional service agreement. Maybe I'm looking at wrong.
Well, we might have invoiced for part of, part of what you're operating design.
Part of.
Because we've.
219. 219 six.
No, well, that, no, that is, that's construction administration fee. That, that's never been billed. We've never, we've never done any of that in any of the previous versions since that's, that's the amount is.
So we're in two different amounts today?
There's two different.
Not immediately.
This one is just changing the, the document.
Okay.
To make the changes to the compensation.
Yes, right, right. So that's the initials of 459 is the redesign portion, the design portion of the, of the fee.
Okay.
Yes.
That is what he's here for. Almontis sent us the bill for.
The 229.
Because they haven't billed us all this time.
Correct.
So that's, that's probably the first half of, of the redesign work, which, like I said, will be finished in a month. So, or I mean, a week in the.
Okay. So you say the 21st is the end of this week?
Yes, it's the end of this week. So that will be finished with that.
Thanks for the plug.
Redesign amount.
Yes, and the other page it says that it would be 219 after the rest of the payment.
Well, you mean, kind of.
All right, Bill's. Are you on the time? I have a motion for me to sign this document from AIC document GA 2. And I'll second that. All in favor? All right, come to talk with me. Please do up here.
Now I'll show this to the council, who's wanting to look at it before they pay, so. So are you going to approve this so they can look at it?
Yeah. Oh, for the invoice? Oh, make a motion to.
Yes, for the sending.
To send the invoices to the council?
I guess, yeah. Something like that.
You will make the look for it?
Yeah, yeah, and I'll make the motion. I mean, send me to council. Only way we keep everybody in the loop. You got a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, get on the pick one straight back down there. Moving along. 911 Board, Advisory Board. Sheriff, what is it?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Last Thursday, the advisory board met and.
A 69.
Pardon me. Decided to keep 911 currently as it is, and then look into, when it comes budget time for 2024, look into budgeting or providing budgeting as it relates to adjustments for 911, which could be decided upon either shifting that responsibility to emergency management, or there was even the discussion possibly placing it back under the sheriff. So, so the overall unanimous vote, we actually took a vote, formal action, and decided to, at least recommend to this board that we stay as we are. And Ms. Turner, who's the current director, agreed to stay on board as director until December 31st. So, in the interim, I'm not real sure that has far more expertise at this than I do, but we need to advertise and solicit applications for a, a new director going into 23.
Look, if we try to move it to EMA or back under the sheriff, I think we'll get anybody coming and step up to do this position after the first year.
Well, again, I, I'm not sure after the first of the year, but again, the, the thought process was that we would, since 23 budgeting is basically done, it's a little late to, to visit that issue. So therefore, that's what we're looking at, you know, for next year, going into 24.
But we didn't know that the current director would step down. All right. Mike, you got a comment?
With that though, Director Turner also said, mentioned that if there was an advertisement early and we found a director that was willing to step in, that she would put her two weeks in earlier in that, in that end of the year.
Most of your guys' decision, I'll show them to you later. You put your back on the council?
We didn't have that discussion.
You keep presenting what you.
We didn't have that discussion.
Does she understand that? Have the decisions been made on that?
I'll explain to her.
She, she was informed that this board had not accepted her resignation at the last meeting.
But we can advertise until we have the resignation candidate.
They just said she extended it to the end of the year, so, yeah, she can still.
Okay, so I saw.
But the question was, is if she could go back down to council? That would be after the new director.
I recommend we can make sure advertising for this position. Lauren? Anyway, I guess, anybody that wants to work, I know it's kind of hard to do. Anyone that wants to work. I said we started with local papers and law enforcement and surrounding. I don't know.
I'll put it on Indeed and put it on it.
Yeah.
How much do you want to spend in the comment? Because I'm sitting here thinking of words to put in, and of course, you know, more words, more money. It's true.
I know.
Or the box, you know, of course, the box, yes, yeah.
Is there one more?
I don't know.
I don't.
Probably have to put something in the description together.
Yeah.
What?
We will look at the last one.
As I say, look at the last.
Yeah.
Look at the last one, and we'll go from there.
Mm-hmm. And I can add some words, you know. Good ones. No, I can't.
We can add the words.
Yeah, but I mean, I can suggest the words, yes. But remember who I work for, it's not for free.
We'll get her done. How long do you want to?
Couple of weeks. Take gaps, take gaps till end of November, that way, in December, they can have a meeting.
Add to November thirtieth, is that where you're saying?
What do you think?
That's.
What do you think, Sheriff, I know you're up there, and.
How long do you usually, you usually run yours?
We kind of ran it two weeks.
Six weeks, isn't it?
Four weeks, gone long.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's do two weeks advertising, two weeks to get them in, and that would be the fourteenth. Have to have them in by the fourteenth, is that right? Today? About five weeks.
Well, we're not getting it in this week, we'll probably get it in next week, hopefully.
So we're doing this one first? Three days ain't gonna make a difference. I think.
I would say put it in a comment, three, at least three weeks, and then have it, have it done by the eighteenth, so you can see it on the twenty-first.
All right, that sounds like a plan.
And if not, you can always put something else in later and.
Then they can have a meeting on the first of December, go through the eps.
How's that sound? Okay, so what did we, like, did you say? Three weeks?
Three weeks for the end.
Improvements for the end? Turn it by the eighteen, the end of the day, or then? End of the day.
Probably noon, so we could have them ready for you on the twenty-first, but it doesn't matter, four o'clock, I don't know, we'll just figure it out. Okay?
Okay. You have a good future, huh? Situation at the jail numbers?
Yes, uh, this morning, we're forty-nine in house, and three out of county. So total fifty-two.
Busy weekend?
Yeah, not bad.
He pulled it out, yes.
Hi, Del.
Thank you. All right, four minutes, over to commissioner's action. She's wanting more money. Did you see that cooler on Facebook? Did you see the cooler on Facebook?
Yeah. I, I actually, yeah.
Is that taken out?
No, I just called out.
Isn't it, it probably maybe.
It wasn't deep enough, so.
I didn't, yeah, that's what I thought when I sent it.
So I, um, our last conversation, you guys requested a sketch and a quote, Doug helped me, this is the company that built the EMS garages. So we kind of sketched something out, two different sizes, and he gave us budget costs, he didn't have time to talk to contractors to get, um, official costs, so he went off projects that he had had to give us these numbers, so we have a smaller and then a bigger where we could kind of pull in. And I know Lauren came down and recommended we do the separate building.
For the cooler?
That, for all of it, just separate instead of inside the building that's already there.
They have the panel wells, they got two, two dollars for it.
Yeah, one's a bigger, one's a thirty by thirty, one's a sixteen by twenty.
And this is just added on to down there?
That would just be a separate building right there in the back on the stone lot where Mike's trailers are currently. On the cottage street side.
With the what?
Yeah.
Well, I didn't figure with the full barn, we're looking to put in later? Yeah. Well, if we put it on board, then.
We got the power lines on the north side.
You need to want to redo the inside building? Lauren?
But you need to look out, I think, uh, I think you need to separate. And then if you do the north side, or, well, I looked at the north side, to the east, I call it east. That's our entrance right now. The parking lot's on that end, but I think people would have to build a little bit of what's going on. For what we do up here. Not very much office space, this is how they special.
Just a garage, basically, yeah.
Wonder about that covering where we're at, we couldn't redo nothing there, where is the, the pool in this? Something like that, sixteen by twenty, fifteen, right?
Yeah, to the, to the south.
Yeah. I think there might be room there.
There's issues with the, I'm getting water line and, and the drain, and that's what's in there.
Water's on the other side of the building, I'm not.
Well, you're still gonna have to do the water electricity for a whole new building? Okay. But you don't want them on the same, prefer to separate the building, I don't think you want them all on the same electrical, because it comes out of one budget.
For main service, definitely.
But if we're gonna build a separate building, that's not connected to this one, are you gonna have a walkway in between the two, is that the plan?
Well, it's right there by the back door, so we just figured, we, where the side door would be, the doors are right there together. We were just trying to save costs, so we're just gonna separate it. Plus the separation, separation would also keep smell down in the right little hole.
Right. Well, I understand that part of it, but the electrical, I think they'd have a room, electrical water to you no matter what, because of being your budget, not EMA's. How do you guys do it now, are you separating?
It's all under my.
If we don't separate it this year, because we didn't know it, um, should be the next, I mean, if it's a more, it would be under her corner.
In my opinion, you'd need to be.
And we'd have to have to get it.
Several meters of water, just some water, because you're gonna use way more water than what the building would, if you have a lot of autopsies going on.
I mean, we don't know what the pressures would be, but, I mean, it's not gonna be every single day, obviously, but hopefully.
And, and your office is still gonna be in that building, the EMA building?
Yeah. Do what you're saying, yeah.
I was just talking about the years and stuff.
Yeah, I, I think I have myself a plan. So I thought we was gonna redo the entrance and block off that one section with the wall separating the two where you walk into the big area. And she still have office space, and Mike's got a displace. Any options?
It's the bathroom wall.
One bathroom, yeah.
They're made in control. And two also, over in the building.
So the sixteen by twenty don't have a garage on it? That's a big difference.
Yeah, and we used, uh, like, double doors versus a garage door, yeah.
I'm just thinking, probably if you have a high-profile.
Right.
Security reason.
Well, that's why we thought the big, that's, yeah, that's why we did two different sizes, so that we could.
Do you have costs?
Are these single coolers?
Well, there are two, Phil had talked about scoring for six, so that's what we did, two three. I mean, you wouldn't have to get both right away, but, um, we put it into the sketches so that we would be allowed to have the space for it.
And this is just the price for the building itself?
Right, I estimated, um, your, your three shelf coolers are running about s- s- high six thousand to low seven thousand dollars.
So if we do the big one, you have a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred in building, plus whatever equipment you have to put inside, another fifty to sixty thousand.
No.
No?
Seven thousand per cooler table, it depends, if we want to look into the one Howard County has, I think it's around three thousand. The other tables I quoted ran about, about anywhere from twenty-five hundred to four thousand, depending on size and, and what we got. So four thousand at the most, probably. So you got about eleven, twelve thousand in those two things.
Does this give you any room for your equipment back, if you could put this up?
There's some different options that we could be looking at, uh, um, I've got some money, or there's some money set aside that we could level some of the ground that's out there behind the, uh, transfer station or in the north, east corner of the county property out there by the manor. Lot the ground out there and gravelot it, and potentially put, uh.
Structure roof?
Not a full blown full barn, but more of a pavilion type thing. That we should be able to do that.
You want your equipment that far away from you? Your office is downtown. Put it out there.
It's not that far away from you. I mean, it's a couple of miles.
Right, and it's outside, then? People out there to mess with it, they want to do, sit outside.
They always put the, place their mobile workers on store. And building up that, so you don't worry it's gonna use it.
Exactly. Well, if I'm gonna do it, I'm only gonna do the bigger one, just for security reasons. We live in back end, people, our public don't need to see that kind of stuff on, in an. I think we'll tell it until we talk to Bill, all right?
Does the council need to know Thursday? Or for that, the therapy doctor?
They're having a meeting on November the seventh, where your argument runs, that's when you get together.
I'll make a motion to the council.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a paper, I'll, I'll study that.
All favor?
Aye.
Please thank you.
He what?
Figures on after.
No, he said, because we just have like a, we get them from last week, and he got, he contacted, and he got that, he didn't have time to talk to the subcontractors, so if he took all the projects and went off of those estimates, and so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you giving some important advice like that. Next would be the auditors off the phones for transfer books, et cetera, you want us to push the devil to the media on that one too?
Yes, unless you want me to explain it just a little bit.
Explain it all?
Sure. Uh, to scan all the transfer books on site was fifty-three thousand, and then, um, scan the flat books, which are an important part of that too, is about five thousand. And then the optionals were, um, the commissioners and pristine books, which I think commissioners minutes and everything would probably be the same thing as impo- as important as the transfer books. The dwell amount was eight, eighty-six thousand, I talked to Randy about getting a server for this particular project, so we can have the searchers go online, I know I bought Penny's, that's an end of seven thousand, so. Just, that's a quick to cover here. Everything would be done on site, too.
Nothing to play with the movement?